Good evening. I call to order this September 30th, 2025, meeting of the Blair Mayor's City Council. I am Andy Rump, the mayor's lawyer, and I'm pleased that you have joined us this evening. This is a public meeting and you aren't part of the process, even you will, are part of the process. I encourage you to participate, ask questions, and share your thoughts. I will do everything to make sure that your voice is heard. We do have several rules to have us proceed with in the meeting, and I ask that you please keep them in mind. If you have a cell phone, please turn it on. If you need to take a call, step outside the chamber. When you wish to speak, simply raise your hand, and I will recognize you. You can come forward to the podium. Brendan Gillar, our city clerk, must report who you are, so please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address. Keep your remarks brief, about three minutes, so that others have the opportunity to speak. That's for you, Kevin.
Oh, gotcha.
And please direct your remarks to myself, to the city council, or to our city staff. A copy of the open meetings app has been posted by both exits, and we will begin this evening with the rule call of members. Banner?
Prison.
Halston?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Wolf?
Hello.
Willis?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Fletcher?
Yup.
Hi, Phil.
Here.
All members are present. Thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am number four, in the call of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda, or excuse me, the consent agenda. Please register your vote. All council members, present and voting aye. Motion passes. I am number five. We will have a discussion regarding the National Incident Management System, otherwise known as NIMS, its framework, local government implementation objectives, training requirements, and hazard mitigation opportunities. Good evening, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council members. Let me just introduce this a little bit to you. Again, and just have a reminder of what it is that we normally do on these Fifth Tuesdays. It's a very different kind of a council meeting than what we normally have during the regular months. This is really an opportunity for conversation and discussion. In fact, I'm really not expecting any actions to be done tonight, no motions to have to be made. There's really nothing in spark in front of you that is actionable, but we do want some feedback from you. So part of it is informing you of certain things that are coming, part of it is getting some feedback from you. So yes, there's kind of making some decisions at that point in time, but at least it's giving us staff kind of a direction on how you want us to proceed, so that we can actually bring then action items to you at future council meetings. So we realize and acknowledge that, I mean, a lot of the citizens aren't necessarily going to be here tonight and tuning in even for this particular meeting. But I do think it's an important one for some good conversation, and I strongly, strongly encourage you, share your feedback, share your thoughts on this. Tonight's the night to be able to do that. So there's three primary items that are on the agenda. The very first one here deals with NIMS, which is the National Incident Management System. And Jake, our Public Safety Communications Officer, is going to come up and kind of introduce us to this whole issue. He's going to do a little bit of a background on what NIMS is all about, kind of help you understand a little bit of that. And we're actually going to take some time, and I think you're going to be ready for this tonight, Jake, to actually have them log in.
If you want.
I do. So obviously, your devices are actual PCs in front of you, and so when we get to the point where we're going to need to create accounts, if you don't have an account already for NIMS, we're going to ask you right on your device to open up another tab, go to the websites that we're going to be talking about, and we'll take some time to try to help create that, because it is something that's a little tricky to kind of go through. But you also have to have access to your email. So if you don't have access to your email either through your phone, or if you don't know exactly how to get through it through the laptop, let us know. We'll try to work with you. We can always do this setup later on, but we felt like since you were all here, kind of captive audience, we would go ahead and try to at least get it to the point where you were logged in and knew how that worked. So Jake will be going over NIMS, then most importantly, he'll be talking about some training that you're going to be required to do, because from a federal perspective, when it comes to emergency management, as an elected official, you do have a role to play for the municipality. Therefore, there's some training that you are technically required to take. And one of Jake's jobs has been to help organize all that, and then he'll be keeping track in kindly reminding you when those things need to be done, so that we can get that training done on a regular basis. He'll also then talk a little bit about hazard mitigation, which is a key part of what FEMA is really all about. It's not just responding to disasters, but it's trying to make sure that when natural disasters do occur, and they're just going to happen, because that's the kind of world that we live in, that when they do occur, that hopefully, we've done things that help mitigate or remove some of the damage that ultimately gets caused by some of those disasters, or at least allows us to respond more quickly after those disasters really do occur. So that's all going to be the first point. Hopefully, we'll get through that in about half an hour. Then we're going to take some time to talk about occupation taxes and the additional half-cent sales tax, get some guidance from you on that. And then just a few minutes at the very end for CJ and I and Sarah to talk a little bit about the implementation of BSNA, which is our new finance package, permitting package. We've got some questions for you as far as kind of what direction you're comfortable moving in, because, and I shudder to think, we're right on top of October. We go live the middle of November. We're six weeks away from all of this. And we have to let our citizens know what's coming. We have to begin to prepare them for this transition, especially when it comes to utility billing and permitting. So anyway, we'll get into all of that for the third issue on tonight's docket. And again, don't hesitate to ask any questions that you have along the way. So Jake, non-up, and let's get going on NIMS.
I will prelude it with, I will try to keep you awake the best I can with NIMS and ICS. So NIMS, National Incident Management System, ICS and State Command Systems, they're in-hand, same thing. Refer to, if you say NIMS, same thing as ICS. So you'll hear them called both different ones. Starting with it, so NIMS really became a thing post-9/11. 9/11, as we all know, was a big incident. A lot of different entities came together to respond to it, and they saw that there was a gap almost for responding agencies on how, each one didn't operate the same. So FEMA made a decision that they needed, at the federal level, to come up with some sort of parameters, guidelines, as may say, for all responders to follow. And that's what this is all going to be based on, is that that way, if you respond to any incident, maybe in Blair, Nebraska, or Phoenix, Arizona, the same command structure is set in place, so that way you can operate seamlessly together. It did come about in 2004, when it was officially created, classes were done, and the structure was set up. 2017, for those of you that had NIMS before, since it's been around a while, every so often, they updated it in 2008, and then re-updated it in 2017. So just like anything else, if you had the license before that, they may have changed one or two things, which makes your license no longer void, so you have to take it again. It is a, again, somewhat of a, it can be dry material, but it's a very good information to have. Again, general NIMS practices. So it's talking about from the incident commander level down to, I mean, your people on the ground, boots on the ground, doing it, and there are different divisions in it. There's planning, there's operations, finance, logistics. If you get into one of those big incidents, you're going to have every branch, so that way each branch has a division director that goes in response to incident commanders. That way, the incident commander can oversee the whole incident and not have to worry about every little piece about it. And that's the way this is set up, and the online learning is the same way, so that way, every incident is the same. Again, as incidents become more complex and difficult and expensive, the need for organization becomes more and more important. One cool tidbit, I like to share this from my ICS 400 class that we took. It's a complex, ICS 400 is an in-person class you have to take, all about complex incidents. This is something the teacher shared that day. So this is the incident management structure for Deepwater Horizon. Can't really see it, but under the operations, I believe it's right here, like, you have divisions even that are, this was a division over the sea turtles that were endangered in the area. So they had a team dedicated to making sure that they were taken care of, and making sure that they're accounting for them and everything. So you have so many different branches under operations, and planning, logistics, finance, I mean, and it gets even further up. So every, like I said, the more complex you get into, the more deep down it gets. Some of the ICS courses to start, so Phil mentioned it, for FEMA, the one, the first things they look at when you go for FEMA funding whatsoever is if you have this, if you have these certifications, if your staff has it. So not to, you know, point the blame that maybe you didn't respond right, the right way, but that way you have the training to respond effectively. So the big ones, they look up at the top. So what we're going to work with, Aaron and I are working on, are these ICS 1, 2, 7, and 8. They go in sort of that order. I know it's, the numbers are awful and weird, but that's the order that they, they make the most sense to you. All of those are online. So these are the class, the whole list of classes, which we'll go through here in a second, but everyone with an asterisk, there are classes that are in-person. There's not many online versions. The ICS 300, 400, you can take online through contractors and have actually like live, in-person, online classes, but everything else is going to be something where you have to go into a facility or have them come to Blair and teach it. But again, those first four are what FEMA really looks for. So those are going to be the four critical ones that we look for for the whole, all city Blair employees to get the 1, 2, 7, and 8 done. And what it does is when FEMA looks at it, it's just a box you check, and that makes you help get to the front line. It's not that, you know, maybe you responded to the incident 110% correctly, but they want to make sure that you have the knowledge, that way you did it right. If you don't have it, it's not going to say you don't get the funding, but it just helps you get further up in the line when it comes to it. We broke it up a little bit more, so again, getting into like the public safety supervisors, maybe like the captain level on the police department, starting to get into these intermittent incident, intermediate incident command system. It's an in-person class. Getting into the national response class, and then another one is the basic emergency operations center functions. Again, post-storm, that's something that's big when we get to start doing emergency operations centers. In Blair, the last two years, we've had two major incidents with storms that have required EOCs to be started. So basically, have that knowledge for everybody. Getting any farther to your public safety command staff, so talking about police chief, your fire command staff, getting more incident command system training, getting your, also into your emergency operations centers, getting more in-depth on what it looks like. You'll see this G402, it's Incident Command System for Executive/Senior Officials. It'll fall under ones that we're looking for for the mayor, city council, and city leaders as well. So this is, all these ones down here on top of what we're asking everybody to get done. And again, this isn't going to be done overnight. It's just like many classes out there that you do online. It is dry. I apologize ahead of time, but there's good information out there, and this isn't a one-and-done fail. You take it as many times as you want. You can study as many times as you want. It makes sure you pass. You go through it, and you can learn as much as you want. What we'd be looking for from city council, city leaders, mayor, is really getting more in-depth, like again, emergency management for senior officials. Again, that 800 and 200 that are above, so those are just two bits. We're getting into basic emergency operations center functions, and then that command system overview for executive, senior officials. So it really narrows it down to how your PC plays into any sort of response like that. Getting into like our wastewater guys, there's disaster management for waste and water and wastewater utilities. It's an in-person class, but how do they play into it if we have an emergency that's going to affect the water systems as well? And then, anybody managing social media. So there's classes about how to do social media emergency management, public information officer awareness. So again, there's, there's hundreds of classes out there. And this is just the tip of the iceberg to get everybody started. Once we get you logged in, you can look for anything. There's classes mayor-specific, council-specific, that build on what you learned in these initial classes, if you so desire to build your knowledge even further. So again, hitting on what we sort of talked about, again, looking at everybody, 1 and 700 are big, and then that 2 and 800 build off it. So we're going to just go a step above of what FEMA looks for. FEMA looks for 1 and 7, but really, 2 and 8 really hit home. It helps with leadership responsibilities, so that way, if we have another big incident and public works is involved, wastewater, water plants involved, fire, law, parks, city council, mayor, whatever it may be, we're all on the same page. And then it also works in hand with Washington County Sheriff. They have this training, so when they come in, they know what to expect as well. Do you want, we're going through this, login? Okay. So there's a couple of different steps we can start with. First one here, so we're going to look for this website up here. Go and type it on in. It's login.gov. It should bring up this screenshot here on the side where you can create, create an account or sign in if you have it.
We're doing that now?
Yep.
Going right ahead.
Is this from our phones or from these laptops?
I would recommend the laptops being a lot easier.
Yeah, it'll be a lot easier, and you can open up another tab inside your browser.
Top site?
Yeah, top site, either one. It'll get you to the same spot, so one's just a little bit shorter.
If you just type in the login.gov, then.
Again, you're looking for this website screenshot that's on the left-hand side up here for the sign-in, create account.
Is this using org or the geo?
I would use your new one, because that's going to be your transitioning to one.
Uh, no, he's not here. I use my old ones.
As of tomorrow.
As of tomorrow.
Right?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Add the email.
Yeah, correct.
Well, you'll still get them, but he's got everything.
What .org is?
Because they're going to, they're going to get.
.gov.
Something to that.
Do the .org, just start with the .org, because the switch is tomorrow for .gov, but it'll still, the .org will rule through your new email as well. So we. Yeah, Blair, Nebraska, .org, do that, the email is starting.
And just to help you understand what's going on, the federal government decided a couple of years ago that they wanted to have a central login location for a lot of their different websites. So instead of logging into 18 different sites, so they created this login.gov as kind of the master to rule them all. And so this is where you go to get the ring, you know, and then it will get you. And this will get you then into all kinds of other.
And if anybody out there has a USA Jobs account, it's the same thing. So it's all under the same application. So once you guys are ready to create an account, we can walk through the steps. You're up there again.
Now, the key thing's going to be, hopefully, you have access, like I said, to your, to your work email, either on your phone, or we can show you how to go to the portal and log in, if you remember your password and all that. Or if you've had one in the past, yeah, and then. Oh, if you've had one in the past, yeah, and then. And there's a way to check. I had to check too, because I had my personal email.
Did you have the .org?
And then had to go modify it. Whatever password you normally like to use.
To log in to like, Spark?
I mean, uh, well.
Pro setting up.
If you're going to be setting up a password, like, if you haven't been assigned one. So if you have a special password that you like to use.
That's where I need to take.
Oh, yeah.
I was, I was thinking it.
Same here. Same right there.
It's driving you crazy, bro. Watching all of us try to do this. I do anything.
We're all putting our glasses on.
If you don't have an emergency, these old people.
That's where you're going to be, that's going to be a password. That should be your scorecard, that should be able to work. Make sure that at any moment.
Now you have to check, you have to confirm, validate, so. Oh. Check your email also.
Oh, bingo. I had your pressure.
And then check your email. Do you have, did you use your color resume?
Is it your personal or just?
And then technically, it says, your personal license is under regular rules. So I send email to that account. Oh, go to portal. So just, where you're at, type, we're Porter Gillar to. Dot, we're in, dot office.
You okay with that?
Do I use my personal?
Yeah.
Just take you where you can log in, so down type. On a little, in your whatever.
Once you're there, then.
Once you guys are in, we'll go to the next. So once you verify, yep, so you're in, so just hang back. Login.
It's going to ask if you're here to do that authentication.
Go on, accept this.
All right, one more time. Yeah, I'm trying to decide here.
Try it home.
Try it home.
Yeah, try it home. Oh, yeah.
I can watch it on my big one.
Yeah. Yeah, kind of call it long as you can.
Yeah.
Go on, accept.
Done.
Rule the world. So at least they get farther down the road.
There you go.
We got, so you log in, sit, it's login on the computer now, so it's all logged up, so you should hit refresh.
You need another website.
Yeah, no, when you're, when you're back to the website, or the login.gov, what's it show you?
It just, it just logs in.
So it's going to, it's going to partly get him to the point where they want to do the.
Next step.
Move it back, right? Yeah. So it just kind of happens.
So once they're logged in, just sit there.
Yeah.
That's fine. That's fine. So you're logged in, so you sit login up here. Now you can hit refresh. That stuff you can do later in the week. I don't know. It said something shouldn't be in there following the outside.
One authentication.
Alright, good. So. Should send to your phone.
Put in your email and password for your.
Yep. This is where it's going to just get right there. Okay, well, then just going to sit there.
I'll get participation from you.
You do.
You're the gold star for being.
I need to find out if they changed in 2017, because I might have already taken several.
And they, they, they do modify, and there are a few mayors.
Could you add another email account if you wanted to?
Yes, so when you're.
So it's signed in.
I wrote it down.
Perfect.
I put my password there, Jamie must not take it.
The one they wrote.
The one I just.
So you can reset it. I can show you how to reset it.
You should have started at four. Alright.
Gary, are you ready?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where I get started. Richard, you?
Yeah, so I'm at.
He's at his own personally.
Alright. Any more?
Did you have one?
Alright. Ready for the next lovely step? So, the way the government works and FEMA works is you can't ever just use one website, so you guys are really going to love me now. So leave that open. Leave that tab open, open another tab, and then you're going to need to create a federal emergency management agency student ID. So you could just Google FEMA space SID in another tab.
So go to another tab, hit your plus up there.
It should be the first thing, the first link, and you're going to look for a website that looks like this. It says FEMA Student Identification System.
So FEMA space SID.
FEMA SID login?
You can just do FEMA space SID, and it'll get you to that website. Then you should just. Looking for.
Of course. Yep.
So when you get to it, you're going to need to register for a FEMA SID there on the front page. Just close out of that, and then right there, register for FEMA SID, and that.
I'm okay. I'm smiling.
There you go. And then you just enter this information. It needs some, your first, middle, last name.
Just for manager of authentication. Full bill? It's optional.
That was good.
Yeah. Well, I'm starting to make a call, Bill. So taking messages. 700, 800, 200.
Yep. Okay. This is good.
We're all this guy. Yeah. So I put my personal phone, my personal. Something that usually they could text you about.
So work email. So work email.
So again, you'll enter your personal information, name, contact, name, verse, security question. Then you'll click create password, or create password, and click register at the bottom.
So you want them to do, uh. Well, can you talk about security questions?
Yeah, yeah, do your, do your, put in a security question.
Anything else in work against this one? The city hall is a four two six four one nine one.
Where are you? This bring it, fill us up.
The date, uh, birth date and city.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, usually I put in three.
Was born grand. We're supposed to find the security questions again?
Yes.
Well, security questions, try to remember. There you go, so that's your FEMA SID, just don't touch it. And email it to you as well, so you can take a picture of it or put it in your phone, like I put that in there. Yeah, it sends you an email too, so you have an email with your SID. Get them over here. Create your password.
And you can type it in, or you can. Now, this is a, cause this is another password for the FEMA SID. Can't be the same password.
Can't be the same.
Can't be the same one.
Can't be the same one. Say this is the last login that you can. We're home three after this. You can use the same one, I use the same one for both. So that way you don't ever.
Did you use the same one?
I use the foot one for both.
Yeah, but tricky, you only did twelve characters.
Password.
Throwing it down. This one does require fourteen, compared to twelve, so.
And I have a randomizer on my phone.
You probably already have one, Devin had one. I'm guessing you already have, it's not under this even, it's under my old. I'll help you recover it.
You didn't change it, I had still.
You're good, you're good.
Boy, I'll take you. All right, you got a number.
I have.
Doing all this hard.
Now you guys can put something that I say.
Thank you.
Every day in the same thing.
Yeah, this is for authentic, yes, so did you want to use your own authentic? And also.
I wanted to take a picture, that's email. That, that's ID.
Ours on this, but I don't do all the ID.
They don't remove all your information.
Hey, well.
Well, you have a five, so you can eat a couple.
Bring your paper.
Oh, you're free.
Can't wait until seven, but I'm gonna sign.
Sign first, now.
Looks like nothing.
Sign the last one.
Watch it, but it's probably going.
Kind of long, sure.
Time to share you before.
This is what we're doing.
No. That's two minutes ago.
Really?
We can get.
Spine flailing around, we found.
Really?
I did, I actually didn't get like thirty minutes.
Wish I could say, say. In the door, you guys are making mistakes.
You have to train.
Yeah, bad, bad.
Right now. You want a pen?
I mean. This is like.
Right.
Now working.
So he got to the multi-factor stuff, is that, is this optional? What? And you need. He's still looking for.
No, I'm, I give it.
He said do the security.
I think.
Jake, when is this code getting used every time you log in? Every time you need to take classes, you'll need that code.
Will you leave login with your ID?
Good place, Rob. It's fun over here.
Dinner. Oh, yeah, that's right.
So many banners.
Just grab a rock there with thirteen. Is it a split year?
There, there is a pretty easy way to type in.
All right, so you guys are all in.
I always pack.
You watching us at home?
Just think of that. I'll have to, I'll just keep with you.
All right, so everybody's in. So, promise, no more logins, this next five, give me five, ten minutes. All right, so you don't have to go do it tonight, but here's the login for it, you can just Google FEMA NIMs. This is where all the courses are, we are not gonna do it tonight, this is when you're ready to take classes. It'll bring this up, and it, here's the links right here, you'll click whichever course you want to take.
So do you want them not to go to that page?
You came tonight, you want, but that's when you need to take classes, if you want to look at it tonight real quick.
Right, right, but I mean, at least they can log in and see what that looks like.
Yeah, just Google FEMA NIMs in Google, you won't have to log in until you take the test, is what it is, so. There's not even a log. Yeah, so there's not even a log.
So you don't log in at the front?
Nope.
Oh.
So, so, yeah, when you guys log in, it'll look like this website here, it's got a list of all the courses that you can take. You click on there, it opens up a window like this. So.
And then Jake will be sending out an email later on.
Yep.
Just to kind of remind you.
I'll have all this in details for you.
Just, just send us the screenshots we need.
Yep, screenshots, right here on the side, you'll take the course, you'll take, take the final exam, when you take the final exam, it opens up this, this is where it comes in, that you'll need your FEMA SID number that you just created as well. You'll take the test, and then when you get a certificate, all what we'll do, the process is just send it to me and I'll keep it. You'll get an email with the certificate right here, just saying like this, that you completed I, I, IS, whatever number it is, and so forth. Good, ICS and NIMs.
Thank you.
All right, real quick, we'll go through hazard mitigation, um. Hazard mitigation, like Phil talked about, is the stuff where you create a plan with stakeholders in the community of different entities, you work together. Usually lessons learned from an incident, or if you, by doing hazard mitigation assessments and deciding what, what threats you have for your area, maybe tornadoes, maybe a train derailment, whatnot, and working to help mitigate that scenario going forward. There's four steps when it comes to hazard mitigation, so it's just like making any plan, you organize the planning process and resources, you assess the risks and capabilities, you develop a strategy, and then you adopt and implement it, pretty straightforward, so again, organizing the planning process and resources, that's really starting at the local level. You focus on assembling the resources needed, so that's getting together different stakeholders and deciding who, what part they play, if they're gonna be a part of making the plan, do they just want to provide input to the plan, and so forth. You assess the risks, so again, you're trying to find the hazard, hazards for your area, so every time one hazard mitigation plan is done, usually it's the top five for the area. Maybe wildfire risk, train derailment, chemical exposures, flooding, tornadoes, severe weather, their lists are on and on, but what are the top five for your area? That's what you find from your stakeholders, and what do they see as a threat for the area, and you go from there. You develop a mitigation strategy, so how do you, how do you avoid that now, again, natural disasters, how do you avoid a tornado, we can't really build a dome, so what can you do so that you're ready to respond when needed and effectively respond as well? And then you adopt and then implement the plan, so you, um, a lot of, a lot of plans go on a five-year cycle for our area. Ours will start again in the spring of twenty twenty-six, and then again, those plans of the years are laid out, one, years one and two, it's editing, adopting, and other changes to the plan, it's also getting your stakeholders involved. Year three is starting to work on securing the funding from FEMA or what other grants out there that is possible. Year four is the planning process, utilizing, utilizing most likely an outside consultant, um, and going from there, and then year five, the risk assessment's done, mitigation strategies are done and developed and updated, and the plan's, uh, complete, lasts about a year, and then you start the whole process over again. Who's involved, so for our area, we're in with Douglas and Sarpy County, it's the Papio Missouri Ed River NRD, that's the main hazard mitigation plan for us. The state of Nebraska does have a hazard mitigation plan, it is statewide, so it's very broad, and it has different, obviously, hazards, that we may not have the same hazards that they have out in western Nebraska as well, same for them, they may not have the same as us. So it really gets broken down, as you can see in the different colors, there's a different mitigation plans, a lot of it's gonna be based off of your, uh, water district and everything, you're working hand in hand with that way. The one thing real quick, so a couple links, I'll send it out to you guys, so our hazard mitigation plan is a two hundred and seventy-six pages, there's everybody in Sarpy, Washington, and Douglas County are involved. Aaron wants to, you wanna click on the community profile, I'll show you a quick tidbit, uh, each plan involves, looks like a community profile, shows like the hazard, I think it's page fourteen. So you can see it's briefly goes through it, it has like your elevation, your zoning, your flood risk and everything, keep going. Then this one was put together by Jake, uh, key, right here, so what I really want to show, and then again, like completed mitigation action, so it shows, and then continued mitigation action, so like right now, assessing storm shelter and needs and availability. Stuff that we've done before, storm management ordinance, backup power generator, you sit here and describe what you need, the hazard, it covers all, and then the status, so what we're doing to make sure that this is gonna be done. You know, getting down here and continued, like you provide a timeline, what the funding's gonna come from, is it coming from local funds, is it coming through grants, what's the priority as well, who's the lead agency, is it gonna be the city of Blair administration, is it the public works team, like channel maintenance and bank stabilization? And everything like this, so it involves outside stakeholders as well, maybe the health department, the sheriff's department, whoever it may be, you come together and create this plan and work together, you know, with the channel maintenance, talking about like the Missouri River, do we work with the coast guard out there and everything, see what they have in place. So each one of these, so feel free when you're, when you would like, I could send this out, that, and it's out on the NRD's website as well, this process for ours, again, starts in spring of twenty twenty-six, reach out to NRD, they're gonna start their community. Um, I was involved in the last portion when I was at the health department, they reach out and they ask each agency, do you want to be a part of this, do you just want to provide input, or you just want us to create it and then give you the final copy? And so if they reach out, they ask what you think the hazards are for your area, and then they build on it from there. Any questions on hazard mitigation?
That was great.
Not just stand away for the whole time, so, any other questions, ICS and NIMs, if you have any problems, get ahold of me, I will teach you guys login, and I will help you guys take, get in and get the first couple classes done. Yep, whenever you guys want. Yeah.
Jake, is there a deadline on our training requirements? If there's not, there should be.
The sooner the better, I would say, we're, Aaron and I are working on it, develop a timeline for everybody, so that way you can hold yourselves accountable for it. Um, like I said, I can't stress enough, as much as I love this stuff, it is dry, it is cumbersome, it will take some time, so, you know, when you have free time, or you'd help fall asleep at night, feel free to take some of the classes.
How long do these, do these modules take, roughly an hour?
I, I mean, a lot of it's gonna be just, a lot of it's reading and PowerPoint's powering through, um, I mean, you can have the class up when you take the test, if you need to as well, so. Oh, it's, what I, I explain to people, it's you put into it what you want to get out of it, is it comes down to it, so, if you want the certificate, you can get it done in ten minutes, if you want to get some out of it, you take as much time as you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we felt like it would be important and helpful for you to get kind of a little overview of what NIMs is all about, both, both for your training, as well as so that you're just kind of aware, when we talk at times about different aspects of this program that we're involved with, whether it's tabletop, uh, you know, activity sometime, or whether we go down and, uh, the NRD, Papio NRD is the one that, as Jake had mentioned, is the one who's kind of been overseeing this for the last several rotations. So occasionally we'll go down and meet with their staff, and they'll have a big, huge conference room, and then we break up into small little groups and kind of talk about particular hazards that are prone for our particular area, and then they put these, uh, these changes together, so. Uh, what we're gonna talk about tonight is occupation taxes, you know, we're gonna pass out this document.
So we are moving on to item number six, discussion regarding additional funding sources for the city of Blair for additional occupation taxes and for additional absence sales taxes.
All right, so just wanted to talk a little bit about what occupation taxes are, let me bore you first with state statute up here on the screen. Yeah, and if you, uh, if you, all those other tabs that we had open, you can just close all those tabs out if you want, if you really don't, you can get back into them, so you go all the way back to Spark, although there's really nothing, even in Spark, you'll get, um, for the rest of tonight. But occupation taxes are something that are allowed, uh, by state statute for municipalities, it's something that we use a little bit, but maybe not as extensively as we should. And at this time, I think it's really important for municipalities to at least be considering all of the revenue opportunities that you have available to you. So as this particular section of state statute talks about, again, chapter sixteen deals with cities of the first class. So it talks about the, the fact that any city of the first class may raise revenues by levying and collecting a license or an occupation tax, and this is the key part, on any person, partnership, limited liability company, corporation, or business within the limits of the city, and may regulate the same by ordinance, pretty broad, uh, it gives you lots of flexibility on what you can do regarding, uh, this, uh, these occupation taxes. The key thing is that it can't mimic a sales tax, uh, cause there's already a sales tax that exists out there, uh, but you, you can charge a fee in a variety of different ways. Now, it goes on here in this particular section to make mention of the fact that, uh, whatever you do choose to do, it has to be, uh, there has to be a reasonable classification of businesses, uses of space, or kinds of transactions. Later on, it talks about, um, down past these sections, uh, it mentions the fact that all such taxes shall be uniform in respect to the class upon which they're imposed. So you can't pick out somebody that you don't like in town and impose a super high tax on that particular business, and then every other similar kind of business pays a different tax. You can identify the kinds of businesses that are out there, and you. Uh, you can identify the kinds of businesses that are out there, and you'll see in a few minutes, a couple of these other municipalities, uh, how, how creative and broad that they have actually been on them. Um, so you could levy an occupation tax for every insurance company that exists. And you can price it a variety of different ways. Now again, it can't mimic a sales tax. Most often they do it by floor space or by number of employees that work at a particular location. Uh, and then you can charge them X number of dollars based on, uh, based on that fact. Or you can charge the same dollar amount, no matter how big of an insurance company they may be. Uh, so that's the state statute that deals with the tax. There is one other section in chapter eighteen that deals with the reporting of these taxes. And municipalities are required annually to have a report on their website that details, uh, the occupation taxes that they have and how they're, well, how much money they've been raising and where those funds go. Uh, whether they go just directly into the general fund, whether they go into some kind of a special fund or something like that. Um, so those are the gory details. The sheet that I passed out before you is kind of a longer version of what I gave here, so that's only about half of what I passed out to you. Uh, but it, this was a comparison that some of our interns worked on for us here recently. Um, trying to show the various different occupation taxes, both that Blair currently uses, as well as what other communities are using. Um, so our hotel tax, even though it's a separate fund, and we talk about that at times and use it for a variety of different purposes, is one of the occupation taxes that's allowed. Um, and Blair right now charges seven percent, uh, which is, uh, on the, usually the upper end of what you see sometimes when it comes to hotel occupation taxes. But we've never had anybody call and complain and say, well, I'm never coming back to this town because, you know, you have a seven percent occupation tax. How often do you go, you know, either on a business trip or you're off on vacation someplace and stop someplace? And, you know, you, uh, you know what the room charge was, and then you see all those other fees that get stacked on top of it. Uh, a very, very common thing that occurs. Um, and one of the things I want you to notice on this particular chart that I passed out is the dollar amounts, and it can be fairly significant some, in some of these areas that end up being raised. So our hotel tax is, um, one of the better occupation taxes that the city of Blair currently utilizes. Uh, back in twenty, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, brought in just a little over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. You can see the natural gas franchise, uh, that we have. But again, a lot of these franchises are a certain percentage, usually it's five, maybe four percent of whatever their gross revenues are, that they have to, uh, to, uh, pay back to the municipality. And, and the whole concept of an occupation tax is, look, you're a business that's benefiting from being able to be here in our community. This is a small way for you now to, to give back, uh, and to take the resources that you're making profit off of and, uh, return a little bit of that back to the municipality. So, uh, of the largest ones that we've got, you can see, it was that hotel tax, the natural gas tax. Um, and all the other ones are, you know, in the tens of thousand dollars a year or less. But as you look across the screen, you'll notice several different ones that are fairly large. And on the handoff that I passed out, I kind of yellow highlighted several of those that you might want to consider. Um, some of you, I know I have told the story, uh, about Blair contemplating a telephone telecommunications tax. Probably, what was it, fifteen years ago now, maybe something like that, Frank? Did not go well.
No.
And it, and it did not go well, I think primarily because of the, unfortunately, just the way it was rolled out. Um, if I remember the sequencing right, uh, one of the council members had been off, off at a, um, at a conference someplace, had been talking with other municipal leaders from a few other places. Uh, he found out that they had a telephone, uh, occupation tax at that point in time. And again, fifteen years ago was back when, um, cell phones were getting more and more popular all the time, but most people still had a landline. Um, and so realized that you could have this occupation tax, and there'd be a tax both on the landline and on these new cellphone lines that more and more people were getting all the time. So came back, had a discussion with staff, talked with a few of the other council members. We drafted something right away for the council to consider, and as this council loves to do, boy, uh, you take an ordinance and you usually waive the second, third reading and boom, you pass it that night. Um, and that pretty much is exactly what happened. Uh, the very first time it was even talked about publicly, it got passed. Uh, and then what was in the very next newspaper? New tax, you know, uh, implemented on telephone lines. Raised quite a stink, uh, and I think one or two council meetings later, uh, that whole ordinance was repealed. Uh, and there went Blair's telephone occupation tax, you know. So I think it's really, really important for us to have good conversations. One of the reasons why I thought it would be probably wise for us to do this at a meeting is, uh, it's in, it's in the public arena. Newspaper's here, we're not trying to hide what we're considering doing, and we're kind of comparing ourselves with others.
Is there a difference between the X's and blanks and zeros on here?
No, not, not really. This was again, partly done by one of the interns. So the X's, I think, are just basically non, uh, NAs or there was no information at the time when they were filling this out.
They could have one, we just don't know.
Uh, correct, correct. Because some of them you'll see that are in the right-hand columns for the revenue, they just weren't able to, to break out those numbers. Partly because the reports, uh, not, not all the cities had reports out there. Uh, again, if you look at the actual language of that reporting requirement, it talks about new occupation taxes that are implemented after a certain date. Some of those cities may have already had all those occupation taxes, and maybe felt like they didn't need to post some of that information. So it was hard to know this particular tax is generating this kind of revenue for that town. And so oftentimes I think you just put an, an X in this. And this is a work in progress. Uh, I just got my little fingers on, on this, uh, chart two days ago, uh, so trying to start a massage a little bit more. Again, as we go forward, if you say, hey, this sounds interesting, we think we want to pursue this even more, we'll be giving you, uh, more and more updated information on what some of these other communities, um, are actually doing. Uh, but what I wanted to mention was specifically on this chart, the ones that I yellow highlighted, um, things like the telecommunications tax, which you can see for several of the larger communities. And yes, obviously they're larger than Blair, so therefore greater population. But, uh, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars you're looking at, uh, that potentially could be generated from a telecommunications tax. Now, let's not play games, a tax is a tax. Nobody likes paying taxes of any kind. But we know that we use a lot of our sales tax to help keep property taxes low, and that's a good thing. Uh, we, we've avoided that nasty postcard, uh, meeting, uh, to have to go and try to explain to the citizens why their property taxes are going up, you know, more than just that minimal amount that the state says, uh, is understandable based on inflation. But you still need revenue to get work done. Uh, and if there's more things that we want to see done in the future, and especially more expensive things, uh, and oftentimes those are capital projects, then you need some, uh, some revenues to be able to back those things up. But you have a wide variety of options of, uh, uh, ahead of you. So I'm not necessarily trying to imply that, oh, we should do, do each and every one of these things and, uh, and, you know, tax people to the maximum, uh, potential. Uh, it's just, these are the options that are, uh, available to you. And the additional half cent sales tax is going to be one that will end, uh, some of the conversation on tonight as well. A couple other ones that you see on this particular chart, uh, are ones that, uh, maybe some of the larger cities, uh, implemented first. And people who live in smaller communities look at those and say, well, that's, that's something that those big cities only, uh, are doing, such as a food and beverage tax. Uh, and again, I'm not recommending that we do that, it's just something that you should be aware of, that more and more communities are implementing that. Uh, and again, they can raise some substantial dollar amounts. Uh, you'll notice that Grand Island's had one and a half percent, uh, on theirs raises over three million dollars. Now again, much larger community, lots of activity that goes on. Uh, you know, they're the, the home of, uh, you know, uh, lots of different activities that go on, including the Nebraska State Fair. And so when people are there, they're eating out, uh, you know, they can, they can generate quite, uh, a revenue stream. But, you know, if you pay attention to the political situation that goes on in Omaha, you know, the former mayor, you know, had first run for office and said, I'm getting rid of that tax, you know, that was implemented before she took office. Uh, and twelve years later, uh, there was no way they could get rid of that tax because they needed the revenue. Uh, it generated so much money. Uh, we don't like it, but then again, how often do you stop and think, well, I'm going to go out to eat and we were going to go to Omaha, but I'm not going to go there because they have a nasty food tax. Uh, you know, it's just one of those realities that some cities are, are implementing and making quite a lot of revenue off of. The last one that I want to spend a little bit more time on this presentation, and then we'll have our conversation, is this one that's just marked on the, the description side on the left, general business. So general business. And it really covers, uh, everything that's not one of the more specific items that's listed on here. Um, and I want to give you some examples of what general business looks like, especially you'll notice, uh, and again, it's not on this page up here, but under the La Vista area, that their general business, uh, is over, well, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and that's because, uh, I was amazed at how many different occupation taxes they actually have implemented. Now this particular page right here is North Platte. And again, this is just an example of their annual, uh, report that they have on their website, showing the, the various different areas. And these are all the very common ones that you oftentimes see for communities that would have some kind of occupation tax. Now you get into a few unique ones, they have a sign one, uh, they have, uh, you know, now plumbers, I mean, we, we have a registration that we do for plumbers. We really wouldn't call it an occupation tax, but you could probably think of it that way for some reason. Um, they have jukeboxes that are on here, so there's a few of those things, dance floors, you know. Uh, Brenda will tell you stories if you take time to talk to her about the different little occupation taxes that the city of Blair used to have when she first got hired here, uh, back seventy-five years, oh, I'm sorry, a few years ago. Um, and one of the things that they had talked about early on was, at that point in time, they were charging oftentimes five, ten dollars a year for occupation taxes. Now again, that was several years ago, and so ten dollars bought you a little bit more back then than it does today. But one of the things you have to consider too is, I'm not looking for new things for our staff to have to waste time on. And so if you're not prepared or not interested in levying an occupation tax that's significant enough to make it worthwhile to go through the process to get that revenue in the first place, then it may not be worthwhile. Uh, so something to think about. But very, very briefly, this is La Vista's chart.
Can you go back one? What is enhanced employment area?
Yeah, good, good point. The enhanced employment area, EEA, is another section of state statute where you can do, um, certain community development projects and then raise a tax or a revenue in that particular area. North Platte has their big mall area that they've done some work on. So it's, it's almost like these entertainment districts now, where you can have certain taxes that you can levy for the people that are in that area. The EEA area, and I don't like if you, uh, if you have much experience with this. But it's, it's one of the things that if you had a large retail area, um, it, it would be a possibility. It'd be a possibility for us. We've talked with a couple of retail developers over the years that have come to us. And oftentimes it's a square footage, uh, amount that you would charge them. But it's a way for them just to kind of help re, uh, repay back some funds that you're able to give them and bond upfront. Uh, and that's what that EEA is all about. So La Vista's, um, and you'll see that this list, uh, and again, I didn't print all this out for you, but you can go to the La Vista website and look at, uh, look at, uh, covers almost any kind of business that you might end up having in town. Everything from barber shops and beauty shops, seventy-five dollars apiece, uh, ten dollars, uh, for every operator over one. So it depends on how, well, how many chairs do you have? Uh, here's your fee that you're going to be charged. Now, again, imagine all of the responsibility though of the city tracking this, of the city verifying, you know, some of this information so that you get some of that revenue. But over time, it really can, uh, add up to, uh, to quite a lot. Convenience stores, seventy-five dollars, uh, per store, so that's just a blanket one. But you have other ones like this auto dealers, new and used auto dealers up here, that's a base fee of two hundred and fifty dollars plus one penny per square foot for inside areas and a half penny per square foot of outside area used for displays, sales or storage, for car storage.
Do we charge how many cars or so?
Uh, you can charge by the number of cars that are on site. Uh, there's a wide variety of different ways that you can do it, as long as you're consistent, and as long as you're not mimicking sales tax. Uh, and so that's one of the key things, and so that's why they have this total square footage, uh, area over here. So there is some documentation and responsibility that the municipality would have and try to kind of track some of these things. But it is a way to say to the local business community, since you're here benefiting from the citizens that live here and making some revenue, we're going to, uh, to end up getting a piece of that, uh, beyond just the sales tax that a few of these, not all, a few of these have. I mean, fewer homes, hundred and fifty dollars a year, dry cleaning, fifty dollars a year. Uh, it goes on and gets even more complex. Uh, here's the hotel motels, again, theirs was at five percent, ours is at seven. They got movie theaters based on how much for, per complex, plus then number of screens that you have. Uh, you've got, you know, games of entertainment and some things like that, vending machines that you can charge. Uh, there's more that, uh, a lot of communities are doing, you know, regarding, uh, games of chance, uh, that you can do. You've got professional services, and so every engineer and architect and physician and dentist and things like that, seventy-five dollars a year plus ten dollars per agent or professional that's in the office. Um, so again, it's just a way to be able to raise revenue, uh, from the business community.
Do we have any licensing team for game of chance when Cubby's there?
We do, we do. Uh, we don't do a lot of verifying of that information, uh, and that probably would be something that we would look at doing, depending on how extensive you want to get with some of this, uh, is that it really doesn't help. And one of the things I probably should have mentioned, and let me go back here to a couple slides. Well, one of the things you'll see listed on the page, uh, especially the bigger page, is for the cable TV franchise and the amount of revenue that some people are bringing in, because again, this one generally, and I don't know what Fremont's is, I'm guessing it's four or five percent as well, uh, for a franchise fee. So that should be four or five percent of their gross revenue. Um, you know, despite the fact that we've had troubles with some of our, uh, local ones, uh, I find it hard to believe that five percent of the gross revenue that's, that was generated this, that fiscal year equated to only five thousand dollars. But if we're not checking, and if we're not reviewing them and auditing, if you will, and we have the right to be able to do that at times, um, they're going to send us what they choose to send us. Uh, and so that's, that's just the downside of this particular task. If we want to have a, uh, an occupation tax, we've got to track it, we've got to kind of know what it is that we're expecting to get, uh, from certain businesses and then follow up on those things.
Mr. Green, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Or, Ms. Wheeler, if you were, you said that the city previously had more. Why was that burned away with?
Brenda?
Because, um, like, our room was ten dollars for the room.
Okay, so.
I was trying to, I was trying to get ten dollars out of the way room. It was like five dollars here, I mean, they were just so small, but we only kept the pinball, uh, ones, you know, ones that were, you could easily, you know, get every year, but so many of them we just did away with because we didn't have the staff and.
That's understandable, but Mike, I've got several concerns. One is Pandora's blocks, once you start this, you make it easier to increase. Secondly, professions, plumbers, and so, how do you keep them? People say, well, I'll go to, I'll hire a plumber out of Fremont because they're not taxes high and whatever, it's not that, so to speak. How do you then deal with the underground, or now you're driving more businesses over there? People do haircuts at home, someone says, I'm going to do my plumbing on the side. Now you're going to start using our, our stretched police department to go down and chase people that aren't paying their, their barber fees? I, I think there's a lot of minutia in this, whether it's a lot of red tape, that's not going to be popular.
Correct, correct. And that's, and that's why we're having the discussion, and that's why I think it's wise for you to, to, you know, be precise and specific on the, the kind of enterprises that you're looking at doing, doing this with.
As a caveat to that, this, these aren't costing you business anything at all. They're just passing it on to everybody else. So this is, I mean, to say it's the cost of doing business in Blair, I mean, for, you know, share some of the profits, if it's costing me, you know, costing everybody else that percentage, uh, for them, you know, for the city, I mean, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And, and, um, I would remind you that again, with our sales tax right now, uh, we bring in three and a half to four million dollars a year. In this budget that just got implemented, three million dollars of that goes into the general fund so that property taxes could be as low as they are. Um, and, and so the revenue needs to come somehow from someone. Um, you know, I, I fully support what it is that we're doing right now, and especially on behalf of the citizens of Blair. Um, some of these businesses, you'll have people who live outside the city who are coming to take, to participate with them. And so like sales tax, you're sometimes then having other people help contribute, but yeah, you're exactly right, this all gets passed on. So a couple other ones, just to notice, uh, again, recreational businesses or whatever that might be, however you describe that, here's again, restaurants. And again, this is, this one's a little bit different. This is a occupation tax on restaurants that isn't on the food. That's a unique card out, because boy, that, that fee that gets attached for the food and beverage seems a lot like sales tax. Uh, and yet the legislature has said, no, that one's, you know, unique, uh, in and of itself. But this one would just be a flat amount based on the size or the number of employees there.
That, that's where I was going, just on the, the food and beverage tax specifically. Um, just recently I was in Lincoln and there were four line items, and there was a local food and beverage tax, there was a state food and beverage tax, and then there was a stadium alcohol tax. There was a state food and beverage tax and then there was a stadium alcohol tax and a stadium food tax. And, I mean, I realize we are, you know, a small city of the first class. I don't know if that's anything that, you know, would even qualify for any of that. But, I, it makes me think with the stadium one, I'm sure they have something else worked out. Are there sunsets on some of these? Could these be like project driven? Like, could there be a temporary food and beverage tax in our community to build some sort of infrastructure and then they would sunset when that was built or what have you?
Yeah, and obviously, our attorney team can chime in however you want, but my understanding is, when you first enact these, you can enact them however you want. Number one, you can go into some of this saying, "Well, I have a particular project here that we're trying to help fund. And so, therefore, we're trying to raise funds for that particular project." And, and in part of what the ordinance would be is that when that project is completed, that tax is going to go away. So, you can set it up that way. You can grant, you can sunset it with a, a date that's in there and you'd have to reenact it, you know, at a certain point in time in the future if you chose to. There are some of these other ones like that EEA tax that are specifically tied to either a location or a particular function. The stadium tax, you know, a lot of times what they'll do with those is in a certain geographic area around some sporting event, they're allowed to, you know, implement those special taxes. Because their whole point is, well, those people who are coming for that event are going to be spending those dollars and so therefore, that's what you get.
These numbers that are, like, for instance, Fremont, one point seven five, that's above both the state and the city. The one set of, just like Omaha's doing with theirs where it's.
Correct.
Extra bump.
Yes.
So, we should have, I mean, there's obviously food and beverage tax that we're collecting, which is that one and a half percent, correct? Currently.
That, that they're collecting.
That they're collecting.
Yes.
So, is there a way to get an idea as to how much revenue is coming in from the food and beverage? How much are restaurants in town are selling and doing?
That if we implement one, how much do we see?
So, we know it's like one percent would generate X number, one point five would generate.
Great question. That would be something that maybe Mike and I, you know, can do some research on and try to, try to find out. You know, obviously, from a business perspective, everyone's sensitive with, with their financial information and so they don't want to.
Yeah, and you don't want to.
Their categories to know.
Seven-five seems like a lot, but if we had the number to base it on, we could see what one percent does, half percent.
Correct. Yes. And we'll talk about that like when we talk about our, our sales tax because we know what our sales tax generates. Therefore, we know roughly what another half percent would generate for us. Surprisingly, this is La Vista still, one more page. So, they, they have a, and this is all in the back of their main form that businesses have to fill out to send in their occupation taxes and it gets even more complicated. Now, this is retail, manufacturing, wholesaling, and any other kind of use of, of business. And there's an occupation tax based upon the square footage of the particular facility. So, the larger the building that you have or whatever the use may be, the larger the dollar amount each year that you're supposed to pay. But, again, you're back to, well, you then better know how many businesses like this are out there because you don't want the freeloaders just to not pay because I just don't want to. Because that's not fair for the honest one who is paying if you're not doing any kind of checking or verification. So, there's legwork, work involved. Now, sometimes that work is good work. One of the things staff has been talking about doing with our GIS system is adding a layer in there so that we can track all the different buildings, what the building type is, what its occupancy currently is. Not simply because we want to know his big brother, but we're talking about NIMs, just a little bit, you know, late earlier. What if we had a major tornado that went through town? Wouldn't it be nice to be able to say, "Well, here's the swath of destruction." And with just a couple of quick little reports, I can print out exactly what businesses were impacted, what, what kind of businesses were there, what the general value of those properties are. All of that really should be stored in our GIS system anyway. If we did it and had it coded properly, then identifying what these buildings are, how big they are, therefore, what or not they might be able to generate should be a little simpler process than not quite so daunting. But, even schools, other kinds of service providers, service stations, so every gas station in town, you know, seventy-five dollars plus twenty-five dollars if it has to happen, has a car wash attached. I mean, again, there's all kinds of things that you could do if you wanted to. And then, obviously, they've built in late fees and charges depending upon when you've paid your, you know, required amount and, and whether that food is, has come in properly or not. So, again, not asking for details, but want to open it up just to see what your thoughts are on whether we should be entertaining other occupation taxes.
I can, I can see maybe being supportive of it personally as far as the mayor had asked about. And support particular projects. Say, we got behind, that we decided we wanted to do a cool project. Something that would benefit the entire city. I could see something like that, but I don't know about just a general. It, it kind of bothers me. I mean, it, it becomes so broad and so wide. And I'm sure that we could come up with the exception, but you see about these, the kid that's got a lemonade stand, all of a sudden now, the cops are stopping because, "Well, you're not good." I mean, we've seen that.
It has happened in different parts of the country.
We are not.
Well, they, they may stop for one today.
You want to buy one today. That's just my impression.
I think the first thing you gotta do is make sure we're collecting, to your point, everything that we should be collecting, like the cable TV franchise, that looks like a very low number. I, I feel, Felix is very socialist, you know, going after every person that wants to do business in your community. You know, like, you know, it's going to cost you fifty bucks to do that or whatever the number might be. It just, I just have a problem with that just myself. But, there is some facilities that we should be taxing. And I would say vape stores and the games of chance that are out there, you know, any, anytime people are doing syntax stuff, then we should be taking a cut of that.
Well, I think we won't know that unless we move forward, right, and kind of put in the effort to figure out where we can recoup some of this revenue.
And like I said, there's, there's enhancements that we want to be making to our GIS system anyway. We would need to do those if we're going to do this. So, to me, that's just one of the natural outgrowths as we build that and continue to work on that. It'll be easier for us to, to be able to identify out of this long list of how many of these, you know, exist out there and what some of that potential revenue, I guess, might be, depending on what you're wanting to do.
We have been kind of record tracking or any kind of fees for the vape shops today?
Uh, nothing other than their, you know, tobacco tax, you know.
So, we're charging them a tobacco license? Is that where the fifteen or is that, and that includes like gas stations itself?
Correct.
And that counts big shots too, the vape shops.
Do we know why we have a tax on natural gas but not electricity?
OPBD is required by state statutes to do a, in lieu of taxes payment. And so, they do that every year. It's not considered to be an occupation tax, so it's not on this list.
Okay.
But, we, we do get a substantial amount.
Okay.
Yeah. Great question. Other general thoughts?
Why is the tobacco tax only fifteen dollars? Oh, it is, okay.
We do our work and give it to the schools.
Yeah.
That just seems extremely low for today's.
Anecrotic.
Yeah, it sounds like nineteen sixty-three or something.
Anyone strongly object to us continuing to just kind of look through what other communities are doing, categorize certain things so that we can provide you better information moving forward?
There was a way to do that, I imagine.
Yeah. I mean, to me, that's just part of our staff due diligence, you know, to try to share with you what information, you know, we can, we can put together. But, you know, I want all of you to understand and obviously, you know, those listening to understand that we're not necessarily advocating one direction or another, but these are all the, the cards that are kind of laid out before you to be able to kind of decide where that revenue is going to ultimately come from. All right. Any other thoughts, comments about occupation tax?
One thing I'll say too about the cable TV franchise, I, I kind of feel it's unfair that the cable TV franchise gets taxed, but you can't be streaming. I mean, how's that addressed? More and more people who just, it's sort of like before when you were going to do a telephone tax. At least a cell phone, you could probably figure out how to do that if you wanted to do that. I'm not exactly sure how you figure out how to have a pool.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, and, and just, that's just a thing of technology. It's, it's kind of, we've seen it at, at the federal level with the gas tax because the more electric vehicles you get and the more vehicles that have just better gas mileage, obviously, the tax being generated goes down and, but, you know, at the time, the costs to build roads are going up.
Telecommunications include things like internet?
Um, I believe it is anybody that, I think there's a definition under state statutes and I don't know if you guys are aware, but it, it's almost anything that, that transmits data of, of, of any kind. So, you can telephone, internet, service providers, yeah. And so, from that standpoint, you've got streaming, but it's all because of more of the internet. It's not the individual hulus of the world. Yeah, it is a bigger level of high speed, you know, that you end up charging. All right, uh, pass, there's copies of the sales tax. All right. What I, what I passed out for you tonight on this one is, oh, Aaron, I guess, there were, there was just an interjourney screen, right? I don't think, I don't think I had anything else. So, regarding sales tax, obviously, almost two years ago now, we went through the sales, yeah, that was just an introductory screen. We had the half-cent sales tax on the ballot. There are some unique restrictions about this additional half-cent sales tax. It needs to be tied to debt of some kind and then once that debt is paid off, then it technically goes away. It's not supposed to last any longer than ten years unless the debt lasts longer for that particular project. You also have to have a local, ultimately, a local, uh, in, in a local agreement, sorry, with, with some entity in town. Oftentimes, it's either the county or the school system. But, what I wanted to pass out to you tonight was just this list of all the communities in Nebraska that have sales tax. That's what the main sheet is all about. But, the ones that I yellow highlighted are ones that already are at two percent. And it's not just big nasty cities. There's lots of small little communities that have already implemented by voter approval, the, you know, the additional half-cent sales tax to go up to two percent. But, again, the vast majority of these did it because there was a project in town that they were funding. And it was a project that was significant enough, important enough for the community and the community realized the only way for that project to happen is by supporting this half-cent sales tax. Personally, I think that's our challenge is what's the project that's significant enough? And, and have we shown the citizens that we don't have the revenue to do it otherwise? And that's hard to do, other than just trying to, you know, talk to people about budgets and dollar amounts and here's what we're, you know, doing with our funds. But, I guess the, the big question ultimately for you is, are you interested in pursuing again the half-cent sales tax for the next ballot round that will, you know, be implemented in twenty-twenty-six?
Do we have a project?
Swimming pool, lessons to say.
History and overpass.
Bypass.
Bypass, yeah. Now, originally, North Bypass was, was one of those things. But, again, that's so nebulous without any details of what it might look like. So, you know, how much should we spend to get kind of closer to shovel ready? And then you show them that, well, if this is really what you want, then, you know, we've got to have the revenue for it.
It's a project to cater that, wait.
Yeah.
I've been through there. There's not much.
Everyone has a project that they care about.
I think our first sales tax was for the police department.
Yeah, for the remodel of. And we've done some, I think, that they, maybe one of the very first ones, or maybe it was an expansion of the sales tax, was when Cartagill first came and L B eight forty first got enacted and they needed some additional revenue. That one only lasted, I think, three and a half years or four years, something like that, and then sunsetted. Yes. No, go ahead, come on. No, it's good. This is a conversation.
That's what I thought. So, you know, with, with the half-cent sales tax, the thing that I like about it is it's not just going after the citizens. You know, we have a population increase during the day. It goes up over ten thousand. We're at eight thousand during the night. So, when they come in, they're buying things. That's helping with the pool, with the police station, whatever it is. And it's not just the citizens that get zapped with it. So, that's, that's something that I think last time we, we tried to talk about and it didn't go through that well. But, you know, when we have a retail trade area of over thirty-three thousand individuals come to Blair to shop, we should be taking advantage of that for, for all sorts of projects.
When you say taking advantage of it, it sounds so sinister, but real, I mean, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Or, or you can just raise property tax instead with the citizens.
Right.
And then now you have your eight thousand now, but, yeah, it's, it's one of those things also, if you look on the sheet there, all of your local people, locals, all in the NSA is basically already raised. So, they're going to come up here, they're going to spend it. They're not going to bat an eye. And I guess I didn't do the ratio of the hundred dollars, but I know it's a, it's a very little pop over a hundred dollars, you know. So, it does, it, it, it just adds up, but that's.
It's like an extra fifty cents for a hundred dollars. That's just someone is spending in our community. And that's why when you say taking advantage of it, I don't see it as being taking advantage of it.
No, and that's, but what I mean by that is eight thousand people versus thirty-three thousand people.
Mike, do you, do you remember what percentage of shoppers at Walmart?
Oh, it was, it was, it was already eighty percent. And I still have that.
Cell phone tracking, they had eighty-three percent of the people that shop at Walmart were from out of town.
Correct.
Same with Walgreens.
Let the visitors help pay for some first tax or, pardon, it's a first tax or.
It is, it is.
And what's interesting is, many of those same reasons, that's great, Mike, you said it there too. Many, many of those same reasons, arguments are, are things that kind of fit with the occupation tax as well. And so, yeah, even though part of it you could look at as saying, "Well, boy, this is, you know, kind of being hard on our own businesses." Well, oftentimes, those are businesses that others from other places are taking advantage of. And the beauty is, you have the ability to decide, you know, what, what kind of retail stores maybe do you want to apply? And, and how do you want to be able to do it? Is it going to be based on square footage and the larger the building, you know, the more money or? So, again, you have a lot of flexibility and that's really the whole point of this conversation tonight. You have flexibility when it comes to trying to raise some additional funds.
Do you have taxes on manufacturers, like?
We, we don't have any kind of direct tax right now on any of those. So, you know, the only revenue that we, we get would be from property taxes.
Yeah, thinking their, all their products go out of town.
Correct. And again, you can't do something that would look like a sales tax or a use tax of some kind, but you can definitely base it on, you know, the size of the facility. Probably you could work out something with, you know, a number of employees. But, anything you do, you have to start verifying, you know. And so, how do you track those kinds of things? The, the, the simpler ones to understand and know, like size, you can always easily do a, you know, map off the square footage of the exterior of the building on GIS. That's pretty easy to determine what that number is and then just tell them that this is, you know, this is what we estimate that the size of your building is. So, timeframe, if we wanted to do this, is not immediately upon us, but it will be over the next few months. And so, between now and the end of this current calendar year, we need to be deciding whether we want to put this back on the ballot again. Other things that we need to be considering would be things like you want to look at outside help.
Yes.
To help to. Yes.
Yes and yes.
I'd make one suggestion is, if we're going to do either of these, the occupation tax or the sales tax, we choose one or the other. I think that if you try and put both before people, especially in the current environment, it could look ugly. And you could end up being, having sales tax rejected just because they're mad at the occupation tax. And I just think it's asking a lot of elements.
Is the occupation tax something that gets voted on?
No, occupation tax isn't, but, but again, if you, if you, you know, from their perspective, if you've just skewered me with an occupation tax and now you're asking me to vote on a sales tax extension.
Do the sales tax first.
Yeah. Yeah, there's all kinds of ways to look at it. And, and again, the occupation taxes, you have the flexibility to say when you want to start and when you might want it to end, but they don't have to end.
Now, we have social media presence makes, could make a big difference. I mean, one letter to the editor. I mean, one letter to the editor about the city council ought to be ashamed of themselves, you know, that was total B S in my, my words. But if we have not, everything loaded and ready to go.
Right.
Positive thoughts, like we talked about the half percent with the overpass for kids to get to Deerfield and that kind of stuff. It just seemed like it just dropped on the floor. It just seemed like nobody really, too much coffee shop innuendos and stuff.
And, and part of the reality that you need to consider is, again, back to the, the reality that we're setting aside three million dollars of our current sales tax to keep property taxes lower. Well, may, maybe you ultimately decide that that's not what we're going to continue to do. Now, again, I'm right with Mike, I'd much rather, I think it's wiser to have others who are coming to town help contribute for these kinds of things. Um, but if not.
Businesses coming to town.
Yes, if not, that's revenue that we're choosing to expend that way that you don't legally have to.
Extra half percent, a little over a million at one point.
Yeah, yeah. If you just, just, you know, or, or around a million depending on how much we bring in each year.
I think that's the message that needs to get conveyed to the citizens is, you know, the three million to buy down property taxes. Because the advantage they have and when you can spread it out, and again, like Frank just said, it's the only fair tax is this half cent because then it makes it even across the board.
Yeah, and, and I think we need to do a better job, and I'll start with me as fact. I need to be better to get this information to all of you so that you can share it with others, uh, about how low our levy is from municipal perspective. Uh, it's, it's the lowest in eastern Nebraska.
Period.
Well, there's the number Mike just talked about, there's eight thousand citizens. There is, but eight thousand citizens don't pay sales tax.
Right.
It's somewhere way less than that. Uh, but the, the number that comes in every day, that's a real number. Those people are buying fuel, they're getting a soda pop at Casey's, whatever it might be, that's a real number.
Yeah, the out of towners help, help us, yes, all of us, yeah, so it does.
And we're, and we're glad they come and we're, we're working hard to give them more reasons to come.
You're pulling, what'd you say, fifty cents on a hundred dollars or something?
It's less than a can of soda.
Yeah, I mean, that's nothing. They, some of them, oh my god, a half percent, what are they thinking? That's two penny, you know, a penny on two dollars, that's nothing.
And advantage is, is it's going right back into our community, it's going to our, our project. I mean, that's, they really need to see that, it's not just going someplace else, it's staying here.
Yeah.
Move forward.
Yes.
With help, because with B S N A coming up, I don't know how staff's gonna be able to take a jump.
Yeah, we're gonna be swamped, so. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to then have conversations with the mayor. Uh, if you have any other opinions, please share those with us, but it sounds like, you know, most of you are saying, let's move forward and try again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have number seven. Discussion regarding policy and procedural changes regarding utility billing, building permits and zoning permits to be included with the transition to the B S N A accounting and permitting system.
Uh, yes.
You said to come get her.
A lot of handouts tonight. Thank you. All right, so these are, uh, these are those that you can just pass around. So, Sarah's gonna come back, she's been diligently working, you know, I, I hope you realize the, the challenge that we continue to have and yet the great work that's being done by the people that we do have in our finance department. Uh, so Sarah Vard, and now having Holly with us, uh, has been great, she's been fantastic to, to have with us. Um, but again, it's just those two that are in the finance department right now. We're in the process of, uh, we do have a temporary person that's helping us out upfront, but we're just in the early stages of looking to hire that third individual. But, uh, so, so that's why Sarah was up in front, uh, continuing to work, uh, 'cause she's here, um, probably almost as many nights of the week as I am at times, uh, getting things done, so, because we don't have the bodies, uh, up there in the finance department. So, a couple of things to talk about, you get a sense from you what direction we wanna go in, uh, regarding B S N A. So, again, B S N A is the name of the software, um, the company that has this software package that we're gonna be using for, um, the main accounting system for the city. It also does all of the utility billing and, uh, utility tracking, and it also does all of our permitting. Uh, well, along with that then comes certain questions, I guess, on how we want to proceed. You are aware, I'm sure, that, uh, you know, we send out our bills right now as little postcards, uh, that go out. And postcards are less expensive than regular letters, but postcards are very limited regarding the amount of information that you can have on there. Postcards are also, um, time-consuming from the standpoint of the, both the printing and then we take them someplace else to have them cut, uh, and then have to process them from that mailing perspective. We could do postcards still going forward if we wanted to set it up that way. Most companies these days though are going to full letter size invoices. Uh, and so what we had before you are just two different examples. We kind of see the information, and some of this is additional information that we provided on a paper invoice or a full size, I should say, uh, invoice as opposed to just a postcard invoice. So, my recommendation is that we would move towards this format of a bill and get away from the postcards. Yes, there's, you know, the, the, the actual mailing itself is more expensive than the mailing of a postcard, but they're easier to process with, both with our staff here, we've got folding machines, we can fold everything and then it's just a matter of stuffing envelopes that we've got. Um, if we choose sometime in the future to outsource and go with a billing company, which a lot of municipalities have been doing too, um, then it's a whole lot easier to use this kind of format with than usually than it is on the postcard style.
Yeah, one that does that right.
And we do have somebody in town that does some processing, I guess we do. Uh, and so that they would definitely be, uh, some of that we would be, uh, in our eye on.
Can't you just email this?
Getting to that point, uh, yes, thank you. Um, one of the things that you're seeing a lot too, uh, in modern systems, and again, these are all things that, that Simple City, the old program that we had, which keep in mind was basically a Windows version barely. I mean, anytime you're using a Windows-based program and you still have to hit F twelve, you know, is a, is a significant part of your using the system. I don't care if it's a Windows-based, it doesn't act like Windows. Um, but anyway, it, it was a, a Windows-based program that just couldn't do a lot of what modern utility billing systems can do, B S N A can. Um, and so the online portal is a whole lot better than even the front desk that we rolled out for our citizens a year and a half ago. And yes, you can get all of these electronically. And again, my recommendation to you, this is part of what the conversation needs to be about tonight, is how far do we wanna push this opportunity with being a new system, uh, going forward? My recommendation from just a staff perspective is that we would approach this that, well, the default for this system is gonna be electronic delivery. That's what the younger generation is used to, that's what, that most people are used to, that's the most efficient and economical from a staff perspective. But yes, this program can do other things and this system can do other things, and we can mail you a paper invoice if that's what you request, but should they pay for it?
It should be a surcharge. Everyone charges the major.
Lots of people are charging for paper invoices these days. Um, and not just twenty-five cents, you know? Uh, so, I think my recommendation would be, you know, is five dollars per invoice too much?
What's our cost?
Oh, well, when you, when you take all the handling, I mean, obviously there's the mailing cost, there's the personnel cost, uh, you've got, you know, the cost of paper and printing and then folding. Um, and so, yeah, we could do a little bit of analysis to see what that would, would be like, but I'm guessing it's in at least the three dollar range, not higher than that.
Five sounds right.
Five is low.
I don't forget the bill printed, I mean, I, other ones we've done should be three dollars.
Seven dollars a month because that's the way your husband wants it, but he pays seven dollars to have it printed.
I don't think O P P D or, I don't think there's any fee from the O P P D bill as well as the gas bill. So, I think you go five, it does seem a little bit on the higher side.
I suspect that it'd be the city service, that we shouldn't be profiting off of exorbitantly and going from three dollars to two dollars, two dollars a bill.
But once you get ninety-five percent of the people over, then you go down to three dollars, 'cause you have a lot less work to do.
A lot of people don't do emails and.
We'll show them how. And you'll show them how.
And these, these, th- th- these are the fun tough decisions that we're going to have to be thinking about. Um, and again, we're not asking for a decision tonight, and so, you know, uh, but, but a decision is looming because we have to make a decision on what it is we're going to do. The very next council meeting is the fourteenth of October. We go live the seventeenth of November. Um, so it's basically a month from the next council meeting, uh, when, when we're live, not just starting to tell people that we're going live, that we're live. Uh, there has to be at least one letter, if not two, that are gonna go out to all of our customers, letting them know what it is that we're about to do and the transition that they're about to face.
And that letter, can we send them a sample of what the bill may look like?
Sure, yeah.
You wanna make sure you don't send.
Well, no.
Yeah, well, you'll be.
Watermark sample or something, because I know, having worked with that.
Yeah, they're gonna.
People were calling us here in Blair from Minnesota going, hey, your number was on here, that's not my bill, that's the wrong, that's the example, that's not. So, I mean, you wanna be careful before you send an example with it. What's watermark sample?
Sorry, can I just jump in really quick with the sample, only because we do have a number of folks that, um, are already on the front desk, so they get the P D A form already. So, yes, they've sent us those examples, we're kind of going off of that, but what we also currently already have. So, I think we have, um, forty-four hundred and fifty-four folks that are signed up on front desk right now. So, they are actually seeing them electronically. A number of them are getting a paper copy and getting it electronically, just old habit, I think, which is fine, but if you're getting it electronically, you would really need to be also mailing you one. Um, so, I, I do think a number of folks have already seen it, it might be, it's gonna cost a little bit more if we're gonna send yet another example, um, stuffing another envelope. Yes, we want to be mindful of the citizens and make sure that they've got what they need, but we also have a number of items that are getting mailed out right now too, so I don't want it to get lost in a shuffle like that either, so, anyway.
So, so the forty-four hundred, what's that of the total?
Um, there are about thirty-four hundred bills.
That are mailed.
Uh, that are mailed, no, um.
You said forty-four hundred or signed up?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-four hundred.
There's thirty-four hundred total billing customers.
So, you have thousands of people on paper.
Yep, well, we have a number, a little bit more than that, probably about, because some of them are getting electronic and paper.
No.
So, uh, postcards that we send out are about twelve to thirteen hundred and then we have another hundred and fifty total with the goodie statement that's kind of combined, um, accounts if they have multiple accounts, so.
Sarah, have you, have you had some issues with the mailings?
Uh, the postcards, uh, the postcards are, um, getting worse and worse, every mailing, um, they're just getting lost. And it's not just us, I mean, they're getting lost with other folks, 'cause they're coming in, they're like, yeah, I didn't get my M U P or O P P D or I got my neighbor's bill or three streets down I got their bill. Um, so, it is an issue, but the postcards, people are coming in saying, I got my red letter, which is a letter size, you know? They're getting those, but they never got the postcard. So, I, I think that also will eliminate a lot of the questions that are coming in at the counter, the phone calls that we're getting. I never even got a bill, so.
Now, one of the things we could do, again, throwing out options, and, um, you, you could always, as we're first implementing this system, say that, well, yes, we're encouraging you to go electronic, and so therefore there is gonna be a processing fee, but you could go low with that processing fee for a while, with a clear explanation to them going forward that it's going to increase in a certain period of time. Or you could take the hard approach of what you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit you hard first and, and try to convince you, you know, to, to, uh, to switch over to the electronic version. So, those are some of the options that you're gonna have to think a little bit about. Any feedback that you have, email us, please, um, you know, ahead of time, because we need to have this stuff in front of you to make a decision at the next council meeting, um, on what direction we're gonna go in.
Have we decided what format, I mean, is it gonna look like? I kind of like the Forest Lake look.
Yeah, and we, we haven't decided on any kind of layout at, at all. Uh, the big, the biggest question tonight was, are you okay with laying out by letter?
Yes.
And moving away from the postcards, because that helps us from a, what kind of a printer do we have to have, what kind of processing are we gonna have to go through, working with them from a design standpoint. Then we'll start putting together an example. Uh, my intention is that come the October fourteenth meeting, we'll have a variety of things to share with you as far as what information we're about to send out, but we'll probably decent decisions from you, that yes, this is the direction we wanna go in and what are some of those fees going to be. We'll make last minute changes to that letter and then get it out a day or two later, um, to, to all of our citizens.
I have a question real quick.
Oh, yes.
I would just ask, uh, at least for me, I'll speak for me, that instead of just, you know, articulate why the fee, how much fee it would be, instead of just arbitrarily saying one, two, three, five, seven, or ten dollars. I mean, that'll help me, I know I'm sure the council, to, to make that decision a little bit easier.
And, and, uh, and I'm not trying to discount that at all, because we haven't done the research yet, so I'll try to do some of that. But, just, I'm warning you ahead of time, you may be surprised on either how ridiculously high the number seems to be for our processing, but when you include salary and taxes and things like that, I mean, you know, it does take some time to, to put these things together. And so, but we'll, we'll do that, but whatever number we come up with, someone's gonna look at it and go, well, that's ridiculous. It doesn't, doesn't cost you that much.
Staffs on a hand folder?
Yeah.
Ke- Kevin's molding on dollar bills, they're a newspaper, you should, so, seriously.
Um, what were the three things, the picture lists?
Yeah, about the disconnect, but I was just gonna point out.
Oh, yes.
That we talked about O P P D. So, O P P D is, I don't know if everybody's got a letter, but in the next couple of years, all customers are gonna get a new smart meter. So, O P P D is now going to, if you don't want a smart meter for whatever reason, you end up paying a fee to have your old meter and have it manually read every month of fifty dollars a month to have that done. So, everything's just, uh, a sign of the times, I guess, that everything's kind of more technology, web-based. I, I wouldn't be surprised that if they do the same thing where there's a small fee to still get the old fashioned paper bill. Uh, I was talking about these guys, you know, my previous post in U C N, we switched from car, the postcards to these and there was the little ladies that had had forty years of those postcard receipts and what part of this do I keep? You know, so, there's growing pains with everything. Um, the other thing that Sarah and I talked about, um, just to let everybody know, was no disconnects. We don't plan on doing any disconnects in December, January, or November, December. Um, just as we're going through this whole process of switching people over, in case somebody gets lost in translation, uh, transition, rather. Anyway, we're not faulting anybody if their bill doesn't get sent out or they get lost in the transfer, so we'll give them two months.
They're still very sensitive to that.
Send the letters out to say, hey, you still haven't paid your bill, um, pretending that, not really pretending, but still notice, but you need to pay it by the twenty-fifth, just like we normally do, just so we don't get three months later and we've got some folks that haven't paid for three months and then we're, you know.
It would help out too with Jake taking a picture of the old little postcard and saying, these are going away, here's what the new bill will look like. Look for this in the mail or whatever, where all you gotta do is post up one time online and everybody sees it.
Yeah.
That'd be a cheap, easy way to get the word out.
Yeah.
So, uh, and so not only disconnects for two months, but the, the penalty counts?
Yes.
Were we not gonna do them both for two months or just one month?
Correct.
Okay.
Only beca- sorry.
No, good.
Just because they're go- they're gonna be going through this, we don't go live until the seventeenth, so we actually can't help them get signed up until the seventeenth online, um, and we wanna do it right, um, not rush through it or go, well, you didn't even try to call, you know? No, that's, that's not what we wanna do. Um, so, I think if we waive that penalty fee in November, because obviously that's a, it's just a tricky time with the go-live in the middle of the month, and then, um, also in December, just because there's gonna be some hiccups, somebody says, yes, I got auto pay, but I didn't. It's going to be a lot of extra work on our end if we have to keep going back and fixing as opposed to just, um, I got a red letter. um, I got a red letter, I thought I paid, yep, let's get that fixed.
And auto, auto pay, if you're auto pay and true auto pay, that automatically does it. In our current system, it will still auto pay in November, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so the bill that will go out at the very end of October, we're almost October, right? Uh, the end of October, if you're on auto pay, it will automatically get paid under the old system. Um, and, uh, and then we'll manually enter that information in the new system as we get into it in November. Um, so that November is kind of a weird month, but we also know that some are still gonna be wrestling with it even come December, um, when the November bill goes out at the end of November and then is due those first ten days in December, which is the reason why we're, you know, basically waive that, that penalty calculation that we do, uh, after the tenth, as well as then the disconnects for both months.
When does the new rates kick in?
Uh, and then the new, with the, the new payment rates kick in for water usage in January, but billed in March.
Okay.
Just for curiosity, why is this going live middle of November than say, rather, January first?
Right, and it was part of us working with this big company that's doing multiple cities across the US. Yeah, it was.
Because there will be staff on site for this company.
For three weeks in mid-November.
Okay.
And then the first week in December.
So like thinking, well, why not wait till after the holidays and things are. I just wish outside of.
We wanna be here for Tannenbaum.
Correct.
You got people coming from out of town that's for a hotel tag.
There you go.
All right, so we're gonna kiss goodbye the postcard. Ultimately, we're gonna go to eight and a half by eleven forms. We're going to be encouraging people to be doing things electronically, we'll help them along the way. We'll talk and you can kind of let me know what I think rates-wise should be for what that, what that fee should be. I'll do some calculations here real quick and try to get you something by the end of this week so that you can kind of base that on some information that we're gonna be doing next week. Uh, we talked about the waiving the penalty fees and the counts. Anything else that we had on our short list?
I think that's it.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure there'll be more coming, so we will, we will try as staff. You know, it's amazing how, it, it seemed like it was six or nine months from now that we're gonna be implementing this program and we've been kind of slowly working towards it, and now it's like, oh my gosh, it's six weeks away! Uh, oh, that's a good point, thank you. Uh, building permit fees, um, there also is an online portal now that people can begin to use for applying for their building permits. So I guess part of the recommendation going forward, and again, this will all be fleshed out between now and the, and the fourteenth of October. Um, my, my suggestion to you is going to be that we'll have kind of a similar entry period, probably November, December for contractors. We're always gonna treat our home, uh, homeowners and the projects that they just do on their own and, and pull permits for, we'll up them out however we need to. But my recommendation's going to be that we start letting our contractors know there's an online portal where you can go apply for your permit and you need to apply for those on your own. And if you aren't willing to get away from what we've been doing, which is, has been a lot of handholding and contractors emailing Shelley with certain information so that she can enter all, all the basic information into the system, that if they're not willing to do that, that there will be a, a charge that we're gonna start, uh, applying to that as well. And that'll be probably fifteen, twenty dollars per permit, uh, that will be used as a, an additional processing fee if you don't want to do it yourself.
Fifty bucks. I've got another question on the bill.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, with this new software company, can they do on bill ads as well? Saying, hey, Tannenbaum Festival, Blair, have it on there as well?
Yeah, there was a, there was a, a notes area, um.
I was just wondering, like, on telephone bills, they could put a picture on there with an ad.
An ad, I don't know if they could do that whole ad thing or say, um, but they're, they're.
Don't like this people.
We can share cities.
We might not be able to write out a date, but I think once we get comfortable with the software, some of that, I think we can, we can do in close.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because on, on the, on the side that says Forest Lake, underneath the bars, it says message center. That message center is where, yeah, you can have some special notes and information to them, so. So they have some of that area, it's just limited probably on what, what can go there. All right, so lots of other information coming to you in the days to come regarding BSNA. We're super excited about getting a modern system, but it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be kind of crazy for us to, to get it all.
Good luck.
Walk around like zombies.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anything else you want to share?
Nope, I'm good, unless you have any more questions.
Thank you. All right, yeah, thank you all.
Yeah, it is, thank you.
Item number eight is our city administrator report.
Nope.
So we have a motion over here.
Do we have an update on Von Slope?
Um, just that the letter's gonna be going out by, by the end of this week.
I'd like to propose a motion to a journalist meeting of the Blair City Council.
We have a motion to second to adjourn the meeting. There's really no vote, is there? All right.
Um, St. Mary's Black Label opening tomorrow.
I don't know. I know he was shooting for that, but I.
I don't know.
Still seeing construction happening at the end of the week. All right, so you can learn, high school, come on up, we'll sign your stuff.